Good evening and welcome to the Garfield Heights City School District Regular Board Meeting. Today is Monday, July 19th. May I have roll call, Mr. Sluka?
Yes, Ms. King?
Here.
Juve? Ms. Morrison?
Here.
Ms. Thomas? Ms. Daniels?
Present. Mr. Sluka, allow the minutes to reflect that both Ms. Thomas and Mr. Juve did request an excuse for their absence today. Meeting called to order. Can I have a motion for the adoption of tonight's agenda, please?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Sluka, that was moved by Ms. King and second by Ms. Morrison. Can I have roll call, please?
Yes, Ms. King?
Yes.
Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes. At this time, we will have a moment of silence. And after the moment of silence, if we can have board member, King, lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Moment of silence. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I have a motion to approve the minutes as reflected in tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Second. Ms. Sluka, that was moved by Ms. Morrison and second by Ms. King. Can I have roll call, please?
Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Ms. King?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Good evening. On behalf of the Garfield Heights City School Board of Education, I sincerely hope everyone is having a safe and enjoyable summer break. I'm excited and grateful to the administrative insightfulness of Superintendent Hanky and his staff to have organized such an impactful summer learning curriculum. This is a conventional summer school as in days past, but rather a proactive, thoughtful, and extra enrichment opportunity for students in grades kindergarten through eighth who wanted to grab a hold of their educational journey and steer the wheel of their own academic destiny. This embodies what their this embodies what the Board of Education envisioned with the district's new strategic plan. One where students in Garfield Heights experience premier opportunities and have the freedom to self-feed from a variety of educational programs and resources. The renewed vision of the Garfield Heights City School is to become a premier educational institution, recognized throughout Ohio as fully preparing students to be leaders equipped with real-world skills to contribute to a global society. Our mission will be will be to fully prepare students to pursue their dreams and give back as engaged citizens and future leaders. In addition, as we take another great stride towards fulfilling the portrait of a Garfield Heights graduate, these supplemental learning opportunities represent all that is possible for those students seeking to place their respective educations on their highest priority. I have no doubt that our students are benefiting from our dedicated staff members who are delivering this education. Our sincerest gratitude and applause goes out to everyone involved. The administrative team has also prepared diligently for the start of the 2021-2022 school year by ensuring that all buildings and facilities will exceed expectations for safety and cleanliness on our first days of school, which is Wednesday, August 25th. That day should bring a great deal of excitement for our school family as it will represent another significant stride toward returning to normalcy with our education. Please remain on the lookout for our school district's updates. Superintendent Hanky and his team will continue sharing information in a variety of mediums. Keep up to date on the website, social media, and through videos. We will continue to share more information. As you make your final preparations for the 2021-2022 school year, I wish you peace, comfort, and renewed excitement as we approach August 25th. Enjoy the remainder of your summer. Thank you, and that concludes my report. Is there any questions relative to the report this evening? If there are no questions, we will move to committee reports.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Real quick, if I could comment. If someone wants to have questions or wants to ask a question on the board or just have a comment, they can email me under the two sections of the agenda. One is if you've got a comment on agenda items, there's one section or a comment, general comment or a question, there's a separate section. Just email me at asluka@ghbulldogs.org, and we will get your comment in the appropriate section.
Thank you, Mr. Sluka. And moving on to our committee reports. Are there any reports this evening?
Madam President, I have a Cuyahoga Valley Career Center report. For the school year of 2021, we had 81 high school students participate in work-based learning. Their goal was to add to their knowledge and in their chosen program with hands-on learning. There will not be any meetings for CBCC in July. The first day back for school for CBCC is Wednesday, August 25th. And their next Board of Education meeting will be Thursday, August 26th. Thank you.
Thank you for your report. Is there any questions regarding the report that Ms. Morrison made on behalf of our representative? If there are not any questions, I do have a report for the Policy Committee this evening. The Board Policy Committee met on June 28th to discuss the updated policy changes sent in by OSBA. The new updates come right to our Board Docs program, which the district has been using since January. This is the first reading of the updated policies. The second reading will be added to the August meeting, and the changes will be sent to OSBA and updated. The policies that were reviewed are the following. Policy number AD, which is our non-discrimination policy, it updated language and added district information. Policy CBC, which is superintendent's contract, it updated and also added additional language. Policy DA, bonded employees, it updated and added additional language. Policy EBC, which is emergency management and safety plans, that is, that policy also updated and added additional language. Policy GA, personnel policy, that updated and added additional language. And then we also have policy IGCG, which is preschool program. And that updated language and added, new staff members must get a TB test when hired. We have policy IGCK, which is blended learning. That's that new policy on blended learning. This is a part of the learning center program the district is currently using. And then we have policy IGE, adult education program, and it changed the language in that policy. And we have policy IGED, adult diploma, and that was language change in that policy. All board members should have received the policies for review. The Board Policy Committee asks that the Board consider our motion for first reading this evening, and that concludes my report. Are there any questions regarding the Policy Committee report? If there are no questions, do we have any more reports this evening?
Madam President, Ms. King, I have a city liaison report. The city's Legislative Committee met, held a meeting on June 24th at 6:30 to discuss the Community Relations Committee that was appointed in February. There were some concerns about the meeting that were held and decided that the Community Relations Committee would be pulled back into committee for review. The next Legislative Committee meeting is this Thursday, July 22nd at 7:00 PM, in-person in Council's chamber. On Monday, July 12th, 2021, City Council held a tax budget hearing prior to the City Council meeting. The tax budget resolution and two ordinances were passed during the meeting. A new K-9 officer, Echo, was sworn in at the meeting on July 12th. City Council is now on summer recess and will resume their regularly scheduled meetings August 9th at 7:00 PM in Council's chambers. Thank you, Ms. King. Is there any other reports this evening?
Madam President, if you don't mind, I'd like to see a report on the Finance Committee that just met. And then we have come to a mission statement. I'm not sure if we want to read that out or just it'll be part of our any of our literature moving forward, but I can read that out if it's okay with the committee?
If you can, please.
I can. Mission statement now of the Finance Committee is to review and analyze the revenues, expenditures, and financial forecasts of the school district and the impact of legislation and economic trends on the district's finances that support the Board of Education in making important decisions that aligns with the district's strategic plan of stabilizing its financial outlook and providing the necessary resources and investments in the innovative learning environment and educational program that ensures each staff member and student of varying cultures and socially-economic backgrounds are successful.
Thank you, Mr. Sluka.
That'll be on all of our Finance Committee literature moving forward as a mission statement. Thank you, Madam President.
Are there any questions regarding the Finance Committee report this evening? Thank you, Mr. Sluka. And that concludes our committee report. We are on to our superintendent's report. Mr. Hanky?
Madam President, before my report, I'd just like to give, and I know it's not on the agenda, I do apologize, a brief presentation introducing Mr. Michael Corey to the Board of Education. He's on the board agenda for approval as the Data and Accountability Coordinator for the district. We believe this position and the expertise Mr. Corey is going to bring to it is really going to help our district move forward through the lines of our strategic plan in a much more data-driven direction. And we are very excited to have him onboard. Some of the folks that have viewed the board meetings saw Mr. Corey present in our equity audit. And we're very excited to have him. And if you don't mind that, President, Mr. Corey, you just say a couple of words.
Yes, please.
Well, I just want to thank you for the opportunity to be here at a meeting today. Very excited to be, well, hopefully soon, officially a part of the Garfield Heights City School District team. And after going through the interview process with the administrative team and having worked with your school district over the past years in the equity audit process, I really hope that I'll be able to really bring a lot of my skills to bear to support the district that both at a Board of Education level as well as a building leadership in teaching and student success level. So excited to be part of the team, and I'm grateful for the opportunity to be here today.
Welcome. Thank you, Mr. Corey, and we most definitely welcome you to the Garfield Heights City School District. And we look forward to the impact that your position is going to have on student success in our district. Thank you.
Mr. Hanky?
Madam, thank you, Madam President. The Garfield Heights City Schools is excited to communicate with our Bulldog School family. The first day of school for students in grades first through 12th will be Wednesday, August 25th, 2021. As of right now, students and staff will return to a five-day-per-week in-person learning environment. Students in the preschool and kindergarten programs will be contacted by their schools to explain the starting date and testing procedures for the start of the school year. In addition, Garfield Heights City Schools will continue following the guidance from federal, state, and local public health officials. Currently, there is no mandate for student vaccinations. In addition, the Garfield Heights City Schools is also awaiting further guidance from public health officials as to what our mask policy will be. We ask you to please stay tuned for further updates from the district. And also, posted today was a survey from parents regarding their feelings about their comfort levels for masking in schools. And we're going to utilize that information to help us make our decisions, in addition to all of the different state, local, and national guidelines. Parents, students, and staff should also please take note that the Garfield Heights City Schools will continue its diligence regarding building and facility maintenance, sanitation, and cleaning protocols. The school's buildings, common spaces, hallways, and school buses will continue to be deeply cleaned and sanitized on a regular basis for student safety. District leadership will continually remain apprised of trending data and information that will preserve and uphold the safety and health of our students and staff. I want to thank the staff members and students who took advantage of our summer learning opportunities taking place at Elmwood Elementary School and the high school. These students have had a meaningful experience through English, language arts, mathematics, and various STEM curriculum while also participating in valuable hands-on and project-based learning exercises as well. Thank you to all who participated this summer and made the learning experience so successful. I'm pleased to announce that I have joined the Cleveland Metropolitan Alliance of Black School Educators. This organization is educator-driven and works to promote the good works and accomplishments of our students and students in the surrounding area and to promote the education profession for students of color. At their annual Juneteenth celebration, Metro Catsy, as they are known, recognized eight of our students. And they will be receiving certificates tomorrow night at a reception here in Garfield Heights, which I will be attending, at the Wind Down Bistro Bar. And I look forward to passing out the certificates. And any board members that would like to join, you're certainly welcome. So it's from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. I just got that today.
Thank you.
Finally, district leadership is eager to begin the 2021-2022 school year with another significant stride for normalcy while pursuing the organizational values outlined in our strategic plan. We look forward to your partnership and journey together. Please stay on the lookout for more updates from the district as they emerge. Enjoy the remainder of your summer. Madam President, thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Hanky. Is there any questions relative to Mr. Hanky's report today? I just, I have one question. How many students have we had? How many students are participating in our summer enrichment program?
I want to get the answer, the final answer for you after Friday.
Okay.
And I will send that to the board. We've been averaging of attendance, you know, between 60 and 80 students, a little bit lower as the week goes on, which makes some sense. You know, it is a voluntary program. But anecdotally, what I've witnessed has been very successful. I know, Ms. Daniels, you might have witnessed some of the things at the event. So we're very pleased with it, but we'll get the final numbers to you.
Thank you, yes. I was very pleased with the outcomes and in particular, your staff has shared just the testimonial of a student that they had not seen in the light that they were able to see in this program. And they were able to identify some strengths that the student had in these enrichment programs that they were not able to identify in the building. You know, so it was really nice to see, to be able to hear that type of testimony about a student really having a breakthrough thanks to the summer program. So thank you, guys. And most definitely, the excellent providers that we have, yes.
And Madam President, the educators, they did a great job.
Yes.
You know, really, really, the whole program really came together very.
Absolutely. Thank you. If there are not any more questions regarding our superintendent's report this evening, we are to the section in which we have remarks from the public regarding agenda items. Mr. Sluka, do we have any remarks this evening?
We have none for the agenda items.
Thank you again. If the public is watching, we do have another opportunity for you to provide your remarks to Mr. Sluka. Can you provide your email again?
It's asluka@ghbulldogs.org. A-S-L-U-K-A at ghbulldogs.org.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda today is the reports and recommendations of the treasurer. Can I have a motion to, can I have a motion for items 9.1 through 9.4?
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? Mr. Sluka, did you have any comments you wanted to make on?
Yes, real quick, thank you. Let's break this down. Yeah, we have some final year-end appropriation items and budgetary compliance that I needed to make to bring us into budgetary compliance of fiscal year-end. They're just pure compliance items, tweaks here and there. The other one is I needed to adjust the advances downward because the advance amount needed was different from the original advance, so it's actually lower, which is a good thing. We didn't need as much money to advance, which I like. And then the final one is reports. I went through this with the Finance Committee and just to highlight where we ended up at fiscal year-end. The biggest thing was we fell a little bit short of our projected revenues, roughly around 0.2% short of our projected revenues. And we ended up spending a little bit more than our projected expenditure, so I think it was around 0.34%. Overall, the fiscal year ended with a $2.4 million balance, which is a little bit short than what the forecast showed, but still, it's a healthy balance moving forward. So that's a good thing. And then the last thing here, and just real quick, is I had the opportunity to receive some donations and some money from my organization, Ohio Association of School Board officials for being a mentor for another treasurer. They awarded a $500 stipend for a scholarship. And then I also won a contest for additional $500 scholarship. So what I wanted to do, and I will be contributing my own money, is I wanted to establish a scholarship fund in my mom's name. I'm a longtime teacher at Garfield Heights, and what I wanted to do is to be able to award a worthy senior annual $500 scholarship moving forward for a senior that was going into the world of education. So I plan on doing that starting next year. So the first thing I have to do, the board has to establish the fund for law. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sluka. Anybody have any questions regarding to any further comments prior to roll call?
Just thank you to Mr. Sluka for starting the scholarship in your mother's name and helping supporting, support our scholars that want to go into the education field. It was greatly appreciated.
It was a long time coming, and I just, you know, I need to do the thing that's.
Yes, and my sentiments also, thank you. If there's not any more comments relative to items 9.1 through 9.4, Mr. Sluka, this was moved by Ms. King and second by Ms. Morrison. Can we have roll call, please?
Ms. King?
Yes.
Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes. Can I have a motion for item number 11, which is superintendent's recommendations for certified personnel?
So moved.
Second. Are there any comments?
I do have one question, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Out of the individuals being offered contracts, how many are individuals of color, people of color?
Three at this point.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other discussion relative to the items in 11.1 regarding certified staff? If there's no other discussion, Mr. Sluka, that motion was moved by Ms. Morrison and second by Ms. King. Can we have roll call, please?
Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Ms. King?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes. Can I have a motion for items number 12.1 and 12.2, which is the superintendent's recommendation for administrative personnel? 12.1 is new administrative job descriptions, and 12.2 is administrative staff. So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Hanky, do you mind just explaining to us the new administrative positions and how they may impact the district?
Certainly. We, I took a close look over the past weeks at our central office and am recommending the Teaching and Learning Department have an assistant superintendent that will eventually also include federal programs and grants administration under it. And with that, it would elevate that position to more of a supervisory role. And I am also going to be recommending the hiring of an additional supervisor teaching and learning to help with that. Our coordinator, Family Engagement Preschool Supervisor, has become a pillar, or excuse me, Family Engagement is a pillar in our strategic plan. And the coordinator position, I believe, needs to be elevated to an administrative level to not only reflect the reports, but also to add a much more strategic thinking and process moving forward for us, which I think will be quite important as we move forward. I will continue to look at the central office and where things are in terms of our organization and make sure any processes are streamlined and communication is appropriate and also that we can move forward with our strategic planning and with efficacy and with fidelity.
Thank you. Are there any other discussion? Mr. Sluka, I just have one point of discussion. Just wondering the financial impact to the school district with the additions and the restructuring.
The financial impact is negligible to the effect of a lot of this money, we can use ESAR for because, and some of the gauging out with wellness and some of the other things that we can offset some costs by using other funding, including the title funding, federal grants, to offset some of the costs of these, of this personnel. So we're getting creative with these positions and what we can use the ESAR money for, and we think that it falls right in line with those requirements.
And once we're done with the ESAR funds, do we have a plan to continue to support?
Absolutely. We're still looking at moving forward with the strategic planet, plan, yeah, I thought. Strategic plan is, as a key component with these positions and as we move forward and identifying as part of the strategic plan the resources to continue. I think there's going to be other opportunities, especially if the state continues its funding of the Fair School Funding Plan beyond the biennial budget when the ESAR funds run out. I think that we need to plan for those priorities now to ensure the transition to when those monies run out, we have the adequate resources to meet that. And I think that, you know, when that time comes,[1771.11] And I think that, you know, when that time comes, there will be a plan in place to continue with the programming.
Thank you, Mr. Sluka. If there's no other discussion, Mr. Sluka, that was moved by Ms. King and second by Ms. Morrison. Can I have roll call, please?
Ms. King?
Yes.
Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Mrs. Daniels?
Yes. Our next item on the agenda this evening is the superintendent's recommendation for classified staff. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
Discussion. If there's no discussion on these items, that was moved by Ms. King and second by Ms. Morrison. Can I have roll call, please, Mr. Sluka?
Ms. King?
Yes.
Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Mrs. Daniels?
Yes. Our next item on our agenda is the superintendent's recommendations for qualified staff. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
Discussion. If there's no discussion on item number 14, Mr. Sluka, that was moved by Ms. King, second by Ms. Morrison. Can I have roll call, please?
Ms. King?
Yes.
Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Mrs. Daniels?
Yes. And then we have item number 15, which is the superintendent's recommendation for exempt personnel. Can I have a mo, for exempt personnel, and that's item 5.1 and agenda item 5.2? Can I have a motion, please? So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Sluka, do you mind just kind of giving us an overview of the new, up for 5.2, please? The new food service supervisor position?
Yes. We had a, we are right now contracting with Pasonic Partners to help support the food service operation and provide, I want to say different support areas such as menu generation, nutrition, training, and like overseeing the whole operation from a big picture. And what they have done is we have contracted with them to provide 32 hours of support per week, of which they have, they assigned a person from their group. Well, that person was with us for three years. Her name is Lauren Power-Greiff and did a phenomenal job. Well, Lauren had an opportunity to move to a bigger operation, bigger district with their mark. And in talking to Pasonic Partners, they're unable to fill the position as it was when Lauren filled it. So rather than trying for them to find an outside person who really doesn't know our district and doesn't really know the ins and outs, I think it would behoove the district to actually hire a food service supervisor who is a, an employee of the district and not a contracted person. That way we can like keep them in place moving forward. Pasonic, to offset the cost of a supervisor, is going to scale back their contract and just provide the support services to the supervisor rather than just paying that supervisor. Those do the same support services they gave to their employee, they'll give now to our supervisor at a much lesser cost. So the idea is hiring a food supervisor to oversee what kind of what Lauren did with somebody that's invested in the district and actually works in the district.
Any questions, Mr. Sluka, regarding that position? I did have one question. With this new food service provider and Pasonic scaling back our contract, do the district have to go into a new contract with Pasonic?
Yeah, and I, my, my goal is, in fact, with talking to them today, I would like for them, and it just came up too, is I'd like for them to present maybe at the work session in August on their vision moving forward and the services they're providing, to give the board an opportunity to meet Pasonic and, and just get an idea of what services they are providing and will be providing to the district.
Is Pasonic the only company that provide these type of services?
There, no, there's another company out there, but Pasonic, Maureen Pasonic has been a food service person at schools for a number of years. And she's actually, the last job that she had, she led the Hudson Schools, but she started her own consulting company. And I think right now she has about 15 districts, including Maple Heights, that she has contracted with to provide a certain amount of services. And I, and I, just in following up on that real quick, had a quick meeting with them today, and I brought your concerns, especially the menu of what can we get the kids? And how can we get their input on what's, what can we be serving? So that's going to be a priority in there as moving forward of making the menus more, hopefully more powerful to the kids. But, you know, kids are pickled anyways, and some days they like something, and next day it's going to be the same thing, and they just don't have a taste for it. So that's going to be our challenge moving forward, but I want the board to, to hear that directly from Pasonic and what their vision is for our district moving forward.
Great, and thank you. And by the time that presentation happened, will we have our, will we have been, have the opportunity to hire and approve the, the contract for this supervisor?
I think the supervisor will be approved at the August meeting. That'll be the next meeting of the board. But yet you'll have the opportunity then to know who that person is and why we chose that person.
Right. I, I just want to commend you for readjusting this to something internal, because I really do believe that our staff has a better insight on the pulse of our district. So having an actual staff member of the district working alongside Pasonic in the leadership of, ensuring that all of our students, because, you know, I want them not just to be served meals, but I would like to see more children fed. And I think that marrying those two together, working as a partnership, should really benefit that vision for the district.
Absolutely.
Madam Chair, I do have one question for Mr. Sluka. Pasonic helps create the menus, and are those menus have to be USDA compliant and meeting all of the, okay?
All the nutritional requirements that were put in place back when Michelle Obama was in, yes.
Okay.
And that's the challenge.
Yeah.
As they say in the vegetable world, the reds, the greens, and the yellows.
Yes. Yes. This is kind of related, but I just have a general question relative to just our lunch. How is our lunch times determined? Like, is it state determined or district or based upon our contracts?
Teachers have 40-minute lunch under the law, so that's how we base it on.
Yes, I was just, okay, thank you.
Are there any more comments, any more discussion? If there's no more discussion, Mr. Sluka, that was moved by Ms. King and second by Ms. Morrison. Can we have roll call, please?
Ms. King?
Yes.
Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Mrs. Daniels?
Yes. Can I have a motion for number, item number 16, which is the superintendent's recommendation for supplemental contracts? Item 16.1?
So moved.
Second. Discussion. With there being no discussion, Mr. Sluka, that was moved by Ms. Morrison and second by Ms. King. Can we have roll call, please?
Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Ms. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Daniels?
Yes. Item 17.1 is the recommendation of superintendent to the board regarding the approval of the policies, the approval of the first reading of the policies that were included in the policy committee report. Can I have a motion? I make a motion to approve the first reading of the board policies as presented. Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion. If there's no discussion, that was moved by Ms. King, second by Ms. Morrison. Can I have roll call, please?
Ms. King?
Yes.
Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Mrs. Daniels?
Yes. Can I have a motion for items number 18.1 through 18.4? The recommendations of the superintendent to the board for contracts for Mr. Robert Trump, Jefferson County ESC, ESC contract, Damon Industries contract.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. With there being no discussion, Mr. Sluka, that was moved by Ms. Morrison and second by Ms. King. Can we have roll call, please?
Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Ms. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Daniels?
Yes. We have item number 19, recommendations of the superintendent to the board. 19.1 is an addition, of course. 19.2 is student accident insurance. 19.3 is career and technical education waiver. Can I have a motion, please? So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
I just have a comment around the career technical education waiver. I just want us as a district to begin to take a look at how we might be able to increase our career exploration with our middle schoolers as we get into our new strategic plan and building upon. I know part of our strategic plan is, is career exploration and civic, getting our children civically engaged. So I'd like to see us begin to work with CBCC and other partners in the community to help with career exploration, even if it's a career day. There's some online programs, just something to really start stirring the middle school's curiosity. So when they get to high school, they're on the right track and they can choose their path at CBCC if they choose or know what classes to take here so that they are successful in high school and ready to transition to post-secondary education or career.
Thank you, Ms. King. We will start to do that in terms of things. We want to go reestablish what we've been doing with CBCC in middle school class.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I do have a question or a comment relative, just kind of regarding, just not the career technical education piece, but at what grades and what things do we do in the district, just even as young as kindergarten, beginning to introduce our students to educational pathways? Do they know what is available as they, you know, how do we introduce them to that even in our, as early as elementary?
Yes. So the school social workers and guidance counselors have to go into each other's classrooms, and as part of the curriculum is also teaching and introducing different careers to the students as early as elementary level. So that they can go in and show them what careers are, what they can do, and how they get the pathway forward in the career that they're looking at. So as part of the curriculum for the counselors.
So they like know, like, when you get to high school, you know, they have these classes here, or you may can go to college while you're in high school. Like, are we planting those seeds as early as possible that they know to look forward to? We have this, we have CBCC and, you know, like, beginning to give our students a direction on what's available for them here in Garfield Heights City School District.
Yeah, like CBCC, like that is more towards on the middle school level where they're sort of introduced, not more, not so much on the elementary level, but they're, they know about it, and then once they get into high school, then the guidance counselors at the high school, as well as the middle school, those paths forward for those students where their interests are.
And Madam President, as part of our strategic plan, as King stated, we need to look at and plan for broadening those efforts all the way from K all the way up. So, you know, and CBCC is a great resource, and we have to make sure that they understand exactly what they're looking for. If they want to go that route, or move to college route, or if they want to go to military, so.
Yeah, we, and I just say that because we do have a lot of amazing opportunities in our school district, especially once students reach the high school level. I think if our students and our parents knew the great benefits to be lifelong learners in the Garfield Heights City School District, even starting in elementary, as it relates to what they have to look forward to, I think that will support our students in career exploration and, and, you know, to be, well, you know, successful, just like our mission is. And then also, parents will be aware of the benefits of being committed to the Garfield Heights City School District because we have a lot to offer, especially in high school that benefits our students. And just introducing our families to that earlier and our students to, this is what you have to look for in our school district, will most definitely benefit our families as they're making decisions, life decisions, so that they can stay committed to our school district. So our students can have the opportunity at a premier education in Ohio, here at Garfield Heights City School District.
Any other discussion on those items? If there's no more discussion, Mr. Sluka, that was moved by Ms. King and second by Ms. Morrison. Can we have roll call, please?
Ms. King?
Yes.
Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Mrs. Daniels?
Yes. Mr. Sluka, do we have any remarks from the public regarding miscellaneous school items this evening?
We do not. We have anybody that emailed me. We do have some comments in the chat, but I think some of the, one question, and Mrs. Bailey answered a question I'm asking for all next year. There was a question on offer virtual learning and some about an August graduation, which I don't fully understand, but I think a lot of it is really still up in the air on some of the things, so.
Madam President, I think I can answer some of those.
Yes, if you can, please.
The August graduation deals with students that are, have still, are still completing requirements. We do have them coming from the Board of Education generally in August, and they're capping down to receive diplomas. So if that's, if that's what they're speaking of there, we are, and we are, I just put out a survey. We're going to take a very, very close look at masking. There's a lot of things happening right now in the Ohio legislature regarding masking and what we, what we'll need to do and what we're allowed to do. We'll have that information out as quickly as we can. The first step I did want to get is, it's not a scientific survey, but our Google survey, it's up on our website, is just a very basic four-question survey. And only a couple of questions may apply depending on where you have students, about what your comfort level is with masking. You know, Ohio legislature has passed a law that says you cannot mandate masks based on vaccination status that has passed. So there, there's a lot of nuance to this in terms of the legal pieces, but we want to hear from our community members about the comfort level with that. What else is there, Mr. Sluka?
Are we, regarding the mask, I'm sorry, are we also considering staff comfort level as it relates to making those decisions? Because I know that some of our decisions regarding safety, we did not just prioritize the safety of our students, but during the pandemic, we did make, you guys made a lot of decisions where you guys looked at the scope of, because we're an employer also. So are we looking just at the whole big picture?
Yes, well, and the COVID Task Force is meeting, they had a touch point in June, and I purposefully scheduled the next COVID Task Force meeting for next week. So we do have, have time to go over survey results and what the county board and the state and the federal government are mandating, also what our community feels, and what's going to be in the best interest of employees, of students, and everybody. We want to, we, and this is going to piggyback on this, we, we, we'll be coming back in person fully with no virtual school this coming school year, unless there is specific. with no virtual school this coming school year, unless there is a specific medical issue or something that needs to be dealt with through my office. So we want everybody to have a comfort level. The other thing we will be getting information out of is part of our orientation process for students. We want parents to have the opportunity in August to visit their respective buildings to get a sense of what we do in terms of COVID guidelines and protocols and practices, in terms of safety, everything basic from hand sanitizer to our cleaning protocols. You know, possibly maybe we can show them how we disinfect things very quickly with our, with our foggers, which are kind of interesting. But, you know, I mean, and temperature scan and things like that. So I do appreciate that people are getting, the questions are starting to come, but please be aware that we are looking at everything and we will take, you know, the community into account very heavily on this. If you have any questions in the meantime, please don't hesitate to call or email me that I can discuss it for you.
Thank you, Mr. Hanky. And I, as a parent, I did appreciate receiving the survey and you guys considering my comfort level as a parent. So thank you for that.
Madam President, I would like to add one thing. I, I don't mind sharing out those results publicly. We're not, you know, we're not, but just, what I do just know is not scientific. People can take it as many times as they want, but we hope that parents just take it once, you know, so we can do a really good level of what people's comfort levels are.
Thank you. Mr. Saluka, was there any other comments?
There are no other comments.
Thank you. This concludes tonight's meeting. Garfield High City School District next regular board meeting is scheduled for, we actually, we have a special board meeting, work session scheduled for August 9th, 2021 at 6:00 PM. We also have our regular board meeting scheduled for August 16th at 6:00 PM. All of our meetings are streamed on our YouTube site and we encourage the public to participate in your school board meetings because this is most definitely your school district. Can I have a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting as of 6:53 PM?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Saluka, that was moved by Ms. Morrison and second by Ms. King. Can we have roll call, please?
Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Ms. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Daniels?
Yes. Mr. Saluka, please allow the minister to reflect that the meeting was adjourned at 6:53 PM. Meeting adjourned.